Florida State Department Selective of Elegance.
My delegate to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, City Council, Your Treasurer, City Attorney. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, August 24th, 2020. Roll call was taken at our, the public hearing that was held at seven o'clock and we have a quorum for this regular meeting. This meeting is also available using the Zoom meeting app. Those wishing to join may do so by meeting ID number eight, four, six, one, six, one, nine, nine, eight, four, eight. Those that would like to participate by phone may do so by dialing one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. When prompted, enter the ID followed by the pound sign. Again, ID number is eight, four, six, one, six, one, nine, nine, eight, four, eight. Those wishing to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting may do so by indicating raise hand method. If you've called in, use the star nine feature on your phone and then you're joining by the Zoom meeting app. Utilize the raise hand, raise hand icon. This time, we will read the regular council meeting agenda. Number one, or two minutes, number three, petitioner, number four, chairperson's report, five, mayor's report, six clerks' reports, seven treasurers' report, eight, public comment, nine, unfinished business, ten, new business, eleven warrant twenty dash sixteen, number twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the regular agenda as presented.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to support the approval of the agenda. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Two A, approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting hailed on August 10th, 2020.
Move for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 10th, 2020.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 10th, 2020. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Wazworth?
May.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, for approval of the minutes from the special meetings that were held on August 10th, 2020. At six o'clock, there was a study session to discuss the invoice cloud presentation. At six thirty PM, there was a study session to discuss Areatropolis. And at seven o'clock PM, there was a public hearing to discuss an alley vacation. And a motion would be in order to approve those agendas. I'm sorry, those minutes.
A move for the approval of the minutes from the special meetings held on August 10th, 2020.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, to approve the various special meetings, the study session on August 10th, 2020. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Wazworth?
May.
Ms. Roscoe?
Abstain.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Two C, we're requesting approval of the minutes from the special meeting. This was a closed session that was held on Thursday, August the 20th, to discuss an attorney opinion.
Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the closed session held August 20th.
Support.
He's me?
It's been motioned by Ms. DeWazworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the approval of the minutes from the special meeting closed session held on Thursday, August 20th. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I get started, I want to turn the floor over to Ms. Williams for motion.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move the Monday, November the third, city council meeting to Monday, November the 16th, 2020.
Excuse me, what was those dates?
The first meeting of November, which is November the third. We would move that meeting to November the 16th, which would be the third meeting. I mean, the third week, I'm sorry.
Is that a Monday?
It's still on a Monday, yes.
Okay, the third week is the planning commission meetings?
Also through the chair, the second Monday, the 10th, is our regular council.
The third week would be the planning commission meeting, they hold it here on Monday nights in the chamber.
So if we agree to, I'm sorry, through the chair, discussion. If we agree to move from the third to the 16th, what did you say, third?
Yeah, the third Monday, and I didn't realize that that was a planning commission meeting. So is it, what other meeting do we have that third week that's, you know, that day?
But nothing on the 17th. I meant on the 16th. So you want to move the third is?
The first Monday.
I meant the second. The second of November is the first Monday.
Yes.
Want to move it to the 16th?
Yes.
Okay, so then we would have the ninth, the 16th, and the 23rd.
Well, Celeste just brought it to my attention about the planning commission meeting. So would it be possible to have it any other day in that third week?
We have an extra Monday that month. I thought we were going to do is the clerk and I were going to come back with a recommendation because there's some other options we could look at and still not interfere with planning commission. We have a fifth Monday there as well, too, we might be able to work in. I thought we were going to work with the clerk and come back with a recommendation and still try to. I'm in favor of moving it, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not interfering with anything else on the schedule. If we could, can we still do that, Madam Clerk, in September? Would that be okay if we did that rather than?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes.
I'm in support of that as well, too, but I'd just like to look at the calendar and I think there's some other options that we could do without disrupting your schedule and other city things. Okay?
September.
I think that's reasonable if we came back sometime in September with the recommendation. Ellen, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Okay, cancel that motion. I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, I would like to request the clerk give us her schedule. What best suits her schedule for the elections, so that we'll have it beforehand, so I don't have to try to figure out, you know, what dates is on the calendar.
Yeah, I said with the mayor, they said they're going to, y'all going to get together and then they'll come up with a recommendation, bring it back in September.
Is that okay? And your intention is to not have the November 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so do we?
We go.
Is that it? Madam Clerk, I'm not sure, she's, she removed her motion.
Okay, no, that's it, she withdrew her motion, so yeah, it's, we're still the chairperson's report.
Okay, thank you. Before I get started on a couple of things, I want to read a recommendation submitted from the mayor regarding council meetings. In light of the governor's executive orders signed into law in late July, limiting our capacity to ten people in the council chambers, holding both, excuse me, holding both a public meeting at City Hall while offering meeting attendance via Zoom has been, become, been problematic for multiple reasons, in particular, technical problems. Be reminded that during the past several public meetings, we have not had full attendance of elected officials. With full attendance of our elected officials, we only have capacity for one member of the public at any time. It does not permit legal council or staff to attend in person. Following our meeting on August 10th, staff investigated what other communities in the area are doing, what they're doing to hold their city council meetings. What was discovered was that Romulus is the only community taking this hybrid approach and that the level of attendees has been drastically reduced. The following communities are only utilizing Zoom for the council meetings, excuse me, in Birmingham, Canton, Clint Township, Dearborn Heights, Detroit, Lansing, Monroe, Northville, South Lion, Trenton, Troy, and Bering, Westland, Woodhaven, Ypsilanti, and as of August 11th, Allen Park was returning to a fully Zoom format. While persons, big person means are preferred, it is the opinion of legal council that our hybrid approach leaves us open for possible open meeting act violations. City Attorney Steve Hitchcock, City Clerk Ellen Craig Brad, and the mayor have discussed the best format for upcoming meetings and agreed that city council should consider holding upcoming meetings beginning with the September 8th, 2020 meeting via Zoom. Should the governor extend her emergency order passed September 4th, 2020, or should the governor increases the number of attendees permitted in the council chamber. Should city council choose to return to Zoom format, our city clerk and IT department have offered further Zoom training for any council person interested. It's in our hands.
I just wanted to add a little bit to the letters that, you know, I'm all, I was pushing for the face-to-face and then when the governor changed it to the 10, it's been very difficult, guys, it's been very difficult juggling staff. And I don't know if you noticed, and thank you to our treasurer who was willing to step out in our earlier public hearing because we'd have been in violation, we had a gentleman from the public to speak. So when she put that 10 person, that really made it very, very difficult. I would like to be in face-to-face meetings, obviously, but I, I think it makes the most sense and protects us and Steve can add his two cents that we just go back to Zoom for a while and as soon as she releases that order, let's try to come back in here without those restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chair, you know, I just received a text from our audio, they're asking everyone to please speak directly into the microphone because it, they're having a hard time picking up the audio. So, Madam Chair, I don't know if you can maybe kind of slide your laptop over a little bit to the side and then that way you can pick, yeah, pick up your voice there. Okay, all right, thank you, everyone, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Anybody have any discussion about the Zoom meetings?
So what are you asking, Madam?
There's no action, really, it's just, it's just, we just want to get your blessing. We don't want to just say, boom, we're doing this, we wanted to bring it to you and that's why you got the letter and I'm here and Steve here and we talked to Ellen about it. I mean, we'd love to be face-to-face, it's just with the, with the limitation of people, it's really difficult. And, and case in point, you just got, you know, it's tough, I don't even know if I have staff on the call, but it's difficult when you ask me questions, I have to go back to who's on that call for that particular item that you're bringing up or it comes from public comment. So I think it was, you know, I'm, you know, Zoom was clunky for a while, we got through it. Most all other communities, when we looked at who else was doing a hybrid, no one was doing it. They're either doing it Zoom, mostly Zoom, because of that restriction. So we were the ones that were not within the norm when they researched it. So makes sense to do what the law allows and Steve, you can give your sense on the open meetings portion.
I mean, we run the risk of someone saying they didn't have adequate opportunity to come and speak when they can't be in the room, they can't, now, right now, they're saying they can't hear what's going on outside in the other room. So I think, assuming the governor doesn't do any changes, then if you're stuck with 10 by the September 8th meeting, that it'd be better to go back to doing Zoom. Now, there is a, I know the governor's order currently expires on the 4th of September and I've seen her in a couple of interviews suggesting she's going to ease up on certain things between now and September 4th when that order has to be renewed. So we may find that she'll go back to, okay, you can have 50 people in a room, which was what we had before. If she does that, then you can go continue to have regular meetings. But the 10, as the mayor indicated, is very limiting as far as having any audience participation.
I see, we were going to plan to do something other than just the telephone Zoom, right?
Miss, Madam Clerk?
Yes, so it will be video, so you will have to use your laptops. We will continue to prepare your paper copies because I know that that's, you know, that does help and it's hard to kind of utilize the camera, the video, and then also with your civic clerk. So we will, I will, we will continue to provide your, your paper copy, which will be in your mailboxes and then you will have to use the Zoom app from your, from your laptop. So I've spoken with our IT director, Mr. Dudak, and so what we can do for those that, that need some training with it, with using the Zoom app, you can, you know, contact me or, or the IT department and we will assist you with, you know, learning how, making sure you understand how to use the Zoom meeting app from your, from your laptops. So if you can just call and let us know, just kind of make an appointment with us and, and we will sit with you to, to set that up. Okay, but as of now, it's just very difficult to try to make sure, as you see, I'm like doing this, trying to watch here and still and take minutes and things for that, okay?
Just wanted to make a comment. In the beginning, for a while, I was choosing the telephone and then audio was terrible on the telephone. I switched over to the tablet, huge difference, no relation whatsoever. So I just wanted to share that with you, if anybody was wondering, if you only use audio, totally recommend going to a computer and tablet, makes a huge difference.
Thank you.
To that point, we held a business-to-business event via Zoom with, you were on the call, it worked well. I mean, so we've got to step it up and that's what most communities are doing. So unless the governor changed your order, just assume we're going to do that. And if you have feedback or concerns, let us know, okay? Thank you.
No. But through the chair, we did a Zoom last week, a meeting. It was, I called Stephen, five minutes, I'm on, he, we right through it. It's very simple because we have the icon already on our laptops.
Just continuing before I just need to recognize the honorable council, everybody looks really good with their shirts on today, the mayor, yes, and the treasurer, our council, she got, our councilman got a jacket on, but I can still see it, I still see it. So thank you all for committing to this very important cause. They were giving this till the end of October for the census deadline, it's been cut back to September instead. So we have one full month and a week or so to really get the word out about the census. So thank you guys for committing for the rest of, the rest of September to focus on our census, to get those numbers up. We are at 71%. So after all this today, going through September, I'm going to be very curious of what the numbers are going to look like in a couple of weeks. But we are above everybody. Romulus is at 71.1, the national rate is 64%, the Michigan rate is 69%, and Wayne County is 64.6. So we have 71%. If we can get as close to 100 plus at least, you know, we get our piece, you know. So we do want to keep spreading the word. And for those out there, you know, there's no more T-shirts available, but we do have wristbands that if people want to take and give out to folks to spread the word. The administration is also wearing shirts, they have census Mondays, so they're doing these shirts as well. And another thing that they're doing in, in the office, in the mayor's office, is that when people call in, they are asking them, have you completed your census? So that's a great, and just to keep the awareness going and spread the word. And I drove around the city, I want to shout out to Roger Kado, he's been around our city, our parks, there are banners up in our parks. I went to Boise, I went to Fernandez, I went to Jimmy Raspberry Park, and a couple of parks around the city going down Beverly Road. And I drove around the other day and saw the banners, so the word is getting out there. So I just want to thank Roger for his time and efforts out there, putting the banners and signs up. And then everybody here, everybody's doing a part to press that word. And we just want to keep this strong going through the end of September because we got cut back a month. But I think, you know, for Romulus, you know, like I said, we pray everybody gets on board with it and get their numbers up. But I'm just pleased with what Romulus is doing right now. So thank you guys for your commitment to the census. And then on another note, I do want to add that Mr. Bargain, just keep him in your prayers, he does plan to be back with us in September. So keep his family in prayer, keep him in prayer, but he does fully plan to be back with us starting in September. Family, which is what mayor always say, family first, family first. So just keep him as your prayer, as they're trying to wrap up things within their family, so. But outside of that, just again, thank everybody for their participation. I'm curious to see what the numbers are going to look like over the weeks with this and everybody's commitment. And I think that's all I have for the chairperson's report.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to support the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, and listening audience. No quote tonight, but I want to give a shout out to a little guy named Gavin, my grandson. He's had a kind of a frustrating few days and so he's over at Grandma's getting some extra love and cheering up. So with that Gavin, get to bed, so, thank you. Next, just informational I wanted to pass on, you've already heard this a little bit, but obviously the Pumpkin Fest, in working with the Pumpkin Fest Committee, the DDA, the Rotary, all the people involved, no surprise, everybody's been canceling these festivals, if it's Strawberry Fest in Belleville, Apple Fest in Huron. There was just a lot of issues, a lot of concerns, all related to COVID. So doesn't mean that we're not going to do some fun things, so they're going to try to do some virtual things, some other fun contests. So stay tuned for that, but there's just not, not going to put anybody at risk and try to have that type of event this September. So you'll hear more about that as it comes. I do have a couple action items that I, I need to get approval on tonight if I quit from City Council. First of which, was item number A, which is our Healthcare Plan and Trustee Committee. And basically what you have on that one is a request to concur with reappointments for Councilman William Wadsworth and then also for Don Morris for a two-year term, those to expire on August 24th, 2022.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to concur with administration and approve the reappointments of Councilman William Wadsworth and Donald Morris for two-year terms to expire on August 24th, 2020.
Support.
2022.
Okay. It's been motioned, but that's a big difference, Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry about that. I'm sorry. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Williams, to concur with administration and approve the reappointments of Councilman William Wadsworth and Donald Morris for two-year terms to expire on August 24th, 2022. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Abstain.
Ms. Webb?
Discussion, you didn't notice me, but I just had a question. My vote is yes, but I do have a question, since Councilman William Wadsworth is appointed to the Employee of Care Planning Trust Committee, I would like to request, and I'm sure my colleagues would as well, the same that we requested from my colleague Roscoe, because she sits on the planning commission, if you would inform us, and I know you only meet quarterly, but at least let your colleagues know what's going on on that committee, if you would be so kind.
If I can, I'd just make a quick comment. We're, we're improving the whole situation slowly, it's still far from perfect.
But you're being re-appointed, right? Is this a reappointment?
Eva, I don't know what you mean, I'm, I'm sorry, what are you? Yes, he's being reappointed, correct. That's the request, yes. So I guess, are you asking for like the minutes and so forth from the meetings, is that what?
Uh, yeah, well, it doesn't even have to really be the minutes, at least you can just let us know because Celeste, Councilwoman Roscoe, always, you know, she's, she informs us because we, we requested her too. And I feel that any council member who sits on a committee or a commission should inform us of things because sometimes things come to us.
We're supposed to meet again on September the 10th and the following meeting, I'll give you an update of what took place there.
That's all, that's all we ask, thank you.
Thank you. Did I, did I run the vote? Okay, so, motion approved.
Thank you, Council, next is item 5B, recommendation from Roberto Scapati. Purchasing Director, the request is to concur with administration, award bid ITB 19 slash 20 dash 33 to the lowest bidder Century Cement Company. That's for the installation of approximately 2,000 feet of sidewalk along the south side of Van Born. The amount is 115,635 and zero cents, with an additional 10% for contingency for unforeseen things that come up during the process. The funds have been verified and available out of the major street and non-motorized improvement account that's listed. Madam Chairman, I'll move that we approve ITB 19 slash 20 dash 33 for the 2020 sidewalk program for Van, for Van Born Road.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the, to current with administration and award ITB 19 slash 20 dash 33 to the lowest bidder Century Cement Company for the installation of approximately 2,000 feet of sidewalk along the south side of Van Born Road in an amount of 115,635 dollars, with an additional 10% contingency for any unforeseen work required for the completion of the project. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to know, Mayor, do we have an idea when they're going to get started?
You know, I guess I would ask, I think Roberto was going to be on. Roberto, do you happen to know an exact timeframe? I didn't have that in front of me, if you're on the, can you bring him up, Ellen?
Yes.
I know we have Roberto who called in.
All right, I'm going to unmute him. Oh, ready, hey? Roberto, you may speak.
Good evening, Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Roberto, the question was, when would they be starting on that sidewalk on Van Born, please? Do you have an approximate timeline?
The host would like you to unmute your microphone, you can press start. You are unmuted.
Try it again, Roberto.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, there was some technical difficulties here. Um, yeah, the project is going to start mid to late September. The contractor is pretty eager to get started on the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Roberto?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes, with a comment to the make a motion, we, to include the revised correct maintenance account number.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, there was an amendment to that, thank you.
Ms. Ms. Webb, okay, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council, the next item is item C, this is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. This one is to concur with administration, award ITB bid 20 slash 21 dash 03. That's the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, Abutilon Corporation, Inc., I guess is the way it's pronounced, this is for a zero-turn rider, gas riding lawnmower. The amount is 27,837 dollars and zero cents and these funds have been verified and available out of the motor vehicle capital outlay account.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion for ITB 20 dash 21 dash 03 for the turn, zero-turn commercial lawnmowers in the amount of 27,837 dollars.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with administration and award bid ITB 20 slash 21 dash 03 to the lowest most responsive and responsible bidder, Abutilon Company, Inc., for three zero-turn rider gas riding lawnmowers in the amount of 27,837. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Next item is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and Stephen Hitchcock, our legal counsel. Uh, this one is to concur to administration, authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreement with the city of Taylor to provide water and sewer to the Mucci Park site development. And that's commonly done on some of our boundary.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to concur with the administration, authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreement for the city of Taylor to provide the water and sewer to the Mucci Park site development.
Support.
Spin motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreement for the city of Taylor to provide water and sewer to the Mucci Park site development. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
I would just like to know, it, uh, the address is Insta Road, the city around us. So who's supplying this, this, uh, company right now?
Well, this is the new development, so there's no, no supplied water sewer. And it's across the street, so it'll come from the Taylor side.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item is a recommendation from our city treasurer, Stacy Page, and legal counsel. Uh, this was the one that we had the study session on just a few weeks back. Uh, the request is to concur with administration, authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreement, uh, with Invoice Cloud.
To the Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make that motion.
Supported.
Okay.
It's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wisworth, to concur with administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreement with Invoice Cloud. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the last request is a, uh, budget amendment. This one is to concur with administration and introduce Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash five to complete the M Park project in the twenty-twenty-one budget year that was not completed in the prior year due to COVID-nineteen. The attached sheet shows the fourteen thousand, four hundred, and, uh, the reasons why it was bumped over to this year.
Chairman, I'll. Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash five.
Support.
Spin motion by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with administration and introduce Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash five to complete the M Park project in the twenty-twenty-one budget year that wasn't completed in nineteen slash twenty due to COVID-nineteen. Any discussion? Hearing now, Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Number six is the Clerk's report. Six A, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash three. This, um, is to cover the cost of the purchases of the, uh, Clemis, uh, compatible biometric fingerprint computer, which was approved under Resolution number eighteen dash two, two-ten on June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. The budget amendment was introduced at the August tenth, twenty-twenty council meeting. Madam Chair, I'll make that recommendation for second reading and final adoption of the Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash three to cover the costs and purchase of the Clemis compatible biometric fingerprint computer.
Support.
Spin motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with the administration for the, uh, uh, second reading and final adoption to Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash three to cover the cost of the purchases of a Clemis equipment. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth? Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Six B for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash four. Um, this is to cover the costs associated with farm sub-lift station, uh, rebuilding of pump and replacement of the circuit board running alternate pump. This budget amendment was introduced at the August tenth, twenty-twenty council meeting. Madam Chair, I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash four to cover the costs associated with the farm sub-lift station, rebuilding of pump and replacement of the circuit board running alternate pump.
Support.
Spin motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash four to cover the costs associated with farm sub-lift station, rebuilding of pump and replacement of the circuit board running alternate pump. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
The last item under the Clerk's report, six C, and this is a resolution to adopt opinion of the Corporation Council that ballot initiative regarding medical marijuana facilities and recreational marijuana establishments is illegal in form.
Um, Madam, um, Madam Chairman, I will, I will move that the, uh, that the resolution to adopt the opinion of Corporation Council that the ballot initiative regarding, um, um, medical marijuana facilities and, and the recreational marijuana facilities is illegal in its form.
Support.
With Ms. Abdo, okay. It's been motion by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, uh, for a resolution to adopt opinion of the Corporation Council that ballot initiative regarding medical marijuana facilities and recreational marijuana establishments is illegal in form. Any discussion? Hearing now, Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ab- Ms., did you have, oh, no. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you. That was the last action item under the Clerk's report. Um, again, want to just remind everyone, because we're receiving a lot of phone calls with regards to the applications for absentee ballots. Um, if you've already submitted one for the, you know, during the August primary election, because there was a mass mailing, um, through the state of Michigan. So you, if you've already, if you know that you already submitted one back then for August and November, and you received another one, you, you do not need to sit, submit that in. If you're unsure, just give us a call and we can just, you know, we can check to make sure um, that we do have you, you know, on record as requesting a ballot. But it is a little bit confusing because everyone's receiving them in. So it's better before mailing it in, just give us a call. Um, if you know you're on that permanent list and you did submit one, um, during the August, uh, primary election. Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Abdo? When will ballots be mailed out? You know, with all this craziness with the mail, if we could keep our people posted.
Um, right now, we, we, ballots, we have to have ballots, uh, at least forty-five days prior to the election. We have not received them yet. Believe the county's still kind of wrapping it, wrapping everything up as far as, you know, with the August primary election. And I believe last week they just finished the canvassing and things. So probably mid-September, then we'll receive, we should be receiving the ballots. And, uh, you know, the sooner the better, but we can't send anything out until we have them, and then we'll start processing and sending those ballots out.
Yeah, I just want to encourage people to take advantage of the Dropbox that we have on there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Please, please take advantage of our Dropboxes. We have one that's clearly marked for absentee ballot applications and ballots. Uh, you know, it's a silver stainless steel box. Uh, you know, we're gonna ask you not, don't put it in the brown box for the bill paying. Uh, but still, we have several Dropboxes that, that are available if you're just, you know, not comfortable with, um, uh, sending your ballot, your application in the mail. Also, I want to add that prepaid, prepaid postage is also on the applicant, our applications and the ballots. So just want everyone to know that.
I just also want to encourage people, aside from using the ballot, that it is a secure ballot box.
Yes.
That's what they need to know, contrary to what may be.
And you can drive up. Um, we have not opened that ballot box yet because we don't want to get things confused, and we're still trying to process applications. So we, we have set up a Dropbox that's right inside the foyer area when you come into the building. And we also have a Dropbox that's actually in the Clerk's office as well. So once we receive the ballots, then we will open up, um, the drive bo-, you know, the ballot box that's right out front of City Hall.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to also ask the Clerk to, to share, uh, because she's, uh, I know she's aware of it. The issue that we're having with the mail to share with the residents, don't wait too late to use the mail.
So, so, uh, so once you're, once you receive your ballot, um, you know, you know who you're gonna vote for, as soon as you receive it, go ahead and complete your ballot and get it mailed in early so that you allow, uh, the post office time for us to receive your ballot. You, if it's getting like two weeks, the end of October, and you have not returned your ballot, we're gonna ask that you please, please utilize the, the Dropbox. Another thing we want to add, because there are groups out there that they wanted, the intentions are good because they want to help and want to go around and picking up individuals' ballots to help them. No, no, no. I strongly recommend, uh, against that. Um, it's different if you have a family member or something dropping your ballot off. But do not, I strongly recommend, do not, uh, turn your ballot over to some group, special interest group, that want to help. I, and I, I get it, but just please do not do that because you have to, you know, we, the accountability for your ballot and the secrecy of the ballot. So we want you to be responsible. Um, if those that have issues, you know, that they can't get out of their car, if you drive up to the curb, we have curbside service. We can come out to you, those with disabilities, you know, that have issues. We'll, we'll come out to the parking lot, um, you know, to, to service you. But again, please do not turn your ballot over to the groups that want to help deliver your absentee ballot, once they, we start mailing them out. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, with that, Madam Chair, that concludes the Clerk's report.
Okay, thank you.
Um, that takes us to number seven, the Treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, and Audience. Um, first I'd like to thank Council for the support of the agreement with Invoice Cloud. I will keep you updated as we move forward with that. So thank you for your support. Um, I also want to remind everyone that, um, summer tax bills, it's about a month away. September thirtieth is the due date. Just kind of want to put a reminder out there so people can prepare accordingly. If you have questions, of course, you can always call the Treasurer's office at seven-three-four-nine-four-two-seven-five-eight-zero. And then finally, I'd like to mention, I know the Clerk talked about ballots and applications, and she definitely prefers that you would use the ballot box. However, I assure you, if you drop them in the Dropbox for bill payment or at the front door, um, every day I collect those. I've already received some applications. They do get into the, um, Clerk's office, so they are safe and secure. However, she prefers you to use her box, but if we receive them, the Clerk's office does receive them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. This is the portion of the agenda, um, for those who are in the audience, uh, that, that's here in person or those that have joined us electronically who would like to address, uh, City Council. Again, if you've joined this meeting electronically, we ask that you use, we're using the raise hand method. Um, if you've joined, uh, by phone, press star nine. Um, we will acknowledge you, um, using the last four digits of your, uh, phone number if your, uh, name is not displayed on the screen. And then also, Madam Chair, we have several individuals who have submitted, um, requests, written requests to speak that's here tonight. So what we're going to do, we're gonna first, uh, call on those that are here, um, uh, that are waiting, and the best of you, we'll call them up first. And then afterwards, we will acknowledge those that are, uh, that have joined the meeting electronically.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
If I, if I could real quick, are those written requests from Creekside, Madam Clerk?
I don't believe, they're different, there are various other, uh, questions.
Cause I did, uh, I did meet, and I, I offered to have a, uh, individual meeting that pertains to building and PD with them on Wednesday. We're gonna try to coordinate that. So I don't know if we have any one else from Creekside. We have one. So we have one from Creekside, so that list may not be quite, I'm sorry, but I was just trying to cut to the chase and address their issues. So, uh, sounds like we may have one of those. I don't know if we know what name that is, Dave, or Chief. But, uh, if not, we can do the ones, like you said, here. And then if not, I wouldn't mind having those, just so I can make sure they know of the meeting.
Yes.
And I, and I told them I would make sure that the Creekside group was here and publicly let Council know that they have concerns with, uh, a, a couple things, some ordinances, uh, the contractor, and possibly some help with some PD issues. So.
Okay.
I'll try to fill you in on what those are, but I thought it'd be better to try to tackle them with the departments first, uh, before we just have them parade in and, and report out. So, if that's okay.
Right, the, um, Mayor, Madam Chair, those that have are requesting, um, is regarding, uh, the Wick Road construction. Um, we have some questions there, the trucks on Wick Road. So, um, we'll just call those that have, um, uh, submitted those requests, okay?
Start it going.
All right. Mr. Allison, we need, uh, Damon Palmer? Yes, Damon Palmer.
Hello. Damon Palmer, Forest State Street, Owasso, Michigan, four-eight-six-seven. Basically, I'm here tonight just to, see if I can ease some calls off your desk. And, uh, because I know a lot of them are probably calls that are simple, that I can fix out on-site. Easier than going through all the loops of con- contacting GLWA. And then him contacting our project manager, connect, connecting me, so.
I appreciate you. I'd be willing to get your information. I had a call, Ryan was on it and some others today, uh, Roberto was on it. I have another call tomorrow afternoon, and I think an updated call, believe it or not, Wednesday. If you can help, I would appreciate it. It's been, uh, what he's referring to, Council, and you're aware of, you've had probably some contact with the residents as well, the Great Lakes Water Authority. Uh, water line, uh, line is being put through. Um, you know, there was, uh, it started, um, quite a while ago. And, and anytime you go underground, there's gonna be some surprises, but it's been problematic and it's a, it's off schedule right now. So we're trying to bring it back. Uh, probably the biggest thing that I get, honestly, are, you know, from the residents there is, you know, getting blocked. Uh, the, the original plan was to keep it open, uh, one-way for traffic. Uh, they have, they did work with, um, our clerk for the, uh, primary election and paved the strip to the middle school, but obviously we have a general election coming up, which is huge. So I, I kind of outlined a whole list of those with Roberto's help, uh, and we're following up with some of those tomorrow. But I'd love your, uh, contact. If you're on-site then?
Yes, I am the superintendent of the job. I'm in charge.
I would welcome that, if you could, uh, provide that. So, you know, we're, we're just trying to help people, uh, and.
That's what I am.
And we know it's gonna be construction and it's gonna be disrupted, but, you know, when you're telling people, I got one this morning, another one, a gentleman, you know, unhappy, couldn't get to work, you know, uh, that's farther down on Wick.
Yes, um, and I was right there with him, and I was talking very nicely. I seen him, he started laying on his horn about a hundred and fifty feet away from Horner. And I just went to him and said, um, why do you have your horn down? Because, um, I live here, and you should move. I said, well, this is a construction zone. He's loading a truck. You're next out. He'll be done in two seconds. If you, he isn't gonna speed anything up, you laying on your horn. And before I got done with that, the truck was gone and he was free. And we worked with him a lot. I keep my eye for him, try to get him in and out, try to make sure that he, uh, he doesn't call you every day.
Well, I appreciate you coming. I'll definitely take your information, if you can help us expedite it. I know Council would as well, too. It's.
Yeah.
It's been a frustrating, uh, season, and we're just trying to get it back on track with your help and Great Lakes Water.
And I just wanted to, wanna kind of want to give an update a little bit. Um, we will be done on Wick and Cogswell probably by Thursday. We'll be moving to Tyler and Hannah. That quarter, we'll be finishing that up. That'll be roughly probably two weeks if we don't run into any problems. And then after that, we'll be moving back to Wick on the opposite, on the east side of the school. And then be heading down Wick side from there on. So that kinda gives you guys a schedule where we're gonna be at. You have a, um, excavator come, start cleaning a little bit of the ditches up, pulling, uh, debris, pulling gravel, sand, everything out of people's yards, starting to clean up on Cogswell, everybody's mailbox is back in, so if there were some questions that you're receiving, you can tell that, um, that's getting worked on.
Okay, yeah, we've had a barrage of them from the mailboxes to today. We had speeding again, uh, with the, uh, oh yeah, he's outside, he's gonna come in and talk to us, I'm sure too, but, uh, I, you know, I live there too. We, we, we kinda did some stepped up patrol, um, and then it's just random. You know, you get somebody that comes by and, and they've probably been given the route and given the instructions on the speed and, um, so that, that's happened, so we've had to step up with PD a little bit, but.
And I understand that totally. If they are speeding in our construction, they'll be free to take them, I mean.
Right, that's not good for the, the, for the safety employees, yeah.
Safety of our employees, so they should not be speeding at all. I will talk to Hopper in the morning and, um.
It was a Hopper truck, yes.
The Hopper trucks, and I will talk to him personally in the morning. Um, so those are the kinda things that, you know.
Thank you. Hey, I'll take your help if you will mind leaving your name and number and I'll, I'll get that so we can, uh, contact you. We, it's, it's been very frustrating. I've had neighbors knocking on my door personally that we're not happy with things that happen.
You have a car, Madam Clerk, with this information?
You have it all? Okay, she does have it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Can you, oh, I got Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, and I'd just like to say I have a niece that lives closer to, uh, Wick. She lives on Wick, but closer to Cogswell. And I understand, you know, the, the COVID nineteen took over, but if you guys, cause I've been down there several times and it's like nothing's going on, so if, if you can just be a little bit more, you know, uh, Great Lakes Water Authority and the contractors, a little bit more considerate of what those residents are going through, and I'm not saying speed it up to where you do, you know, a half job, but, um, doesn't take a rocket scientist to, to do some of the things that's going on, and a lot of people are upset and they get mad at the mayor or at the council for what's not, for what is not happening in the manner that it should happen. And I understand that you just said you're going back toward Cogswell.
Yes.
Down Wick, so now you leave and you'll be there for two weeks?
Yeah, roughly maybe.
So you don't have, uh, the ability to have someone working back toward Wick and Cogswell and at the same time still working on Wick?
Um, no, we don't. We all we have is, uh, one main crew with one main excavator that digs, cause the pipe is severely heavy. It's twenty thousand pounds each piece, and so we have one big machine that can let that pipe dig that deep. So that's why we're going back, uh, that's why we won't be able to go forward at the same time as we had to go back. And the reason kinda we're going back is with the COVID, we're starting to get our valves in from Japan. And as we get these valves in, this is gonna speed things up because we can start installing the valves. And when by doing that, we can start pressure testing, pressure testing, we can start putting road ditches back in, and we have a crew, uh, we had a meeting today about the roads and stuff going back in, so we will have a schedule for that, um, as of testing. It's gonna, so as soon as testing happens, the road crews are gonna come right behind. They're gonna put the road in, they're gonna do the ditches, the black top, the black top soil, and then it'll be all, and it'll follow us all the way right up to the back of wherever we're at, they'll catch up to us.
And I would just like to make sure that, uh, your company, Great Lakes Water Authority or your, the contracting company, make sure they be considerate. Those big pipes that's been laying in those yards all that time has actually damaged those folks properly, so instead of trying to take the easier way out by throwing some seeds and, and grass, really consider the, you know, the landscaping of those homeowners and, and replace what was destroyed.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Wisworth?
I got, well, I had one thing, but now I have two. I just wish you wouldn't have told me that the valves are coming from Japan, but I wish they were coming from Pittsburgh, but that's, that's a different story. Um, you're well aware of November third, there's an election.
Yes.
You're gonna make every effort that, that the roads open so we don't have to hear on the fifth of November that.
Yes.
And I'm sure you're working with the clerk's office and.
Yes.
Write that down, the third of November, there's an election coming.
Yeah. Um, yes, November eleventh, we are hoping to.
The third of November.
What's that?
The third of November, the election.
November, yeah, November, okay. We are hoping to have paved right up. So I mean, there should be no problem.
Keep the road open the third of November. If you gotta move equipment out of there for a day or so, keep the road open, please.
Is that the school again?
Yes.
Yeah, and actually, our clerk can speak to that. We have a separate meeting that we're trying to relook at the route. Do you wanna speak to that, Ellen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I spoke with, uh, Roberto, uh, this morning, and, uh, we were discussing the route, you know, of, uh, creating a new map route, um, for the residents to, uh, use, utilize that route uh, to get to the middle school. So, um, we're meeting again, uh, this week, I believe there's a, a meeting and, uh, to discuss it, but I did speak with Roberto so that we can make sure that access to the middle school, um, it didn't seem to deter anyone from the last election, even with the construction. It was quite busy there at the middle school.
We're just a little bit worried about that Wayne and Wick because it, it, there could run in some issues there. There's a large vault that goes in, and we may just wanna make sure people have a route there. So we wanna get your input from your employees and voters and, so we'll, we'll take a fresh look at that. We'll have time to notify people, but obviously, that's high on everybody's awareness. It's a big election, so we're doing everything possible.
The best route would be at that time would be to come from E Course to Cogswell to Wick to the school.
Well, I, which is good, one of the routes that I gave, uh, that I was giving to my election workers, um, and especially if you, if you're not from, you know, if you don't know those back roads, you, you can get twisted around, so it's, you know, by taking the main thoroughfare, by going all the way down Wayne Road to Goddard, cause everybody's familiar with Goddard. You have landmarks, and then making a right going in, into town through Goddard, and then you can use a landmark, the bank. Make a right on Shook and take it all the way to the end of the cemetery to McBride, turn left and get to Osga. Those were the directions that we passed on and no one seemed to have problems. We were just trying to make it a little bit easier where there were easier landmarks that if people weren't sure, cause if you're not sure of some of those roads, you can get twisted around.
I know, but can you take, uh, is there a straight kinda shot to Osga from Goodard?
You know what, we're gonna work on that. We're gonna work on your team.
Yeah, maybe you guys can get together.
We'll get that nailed down and we'll make sure that, uh, we have Ellen's input, her employees, the residents, uh, Rickman, Great Lakes, our team, and then we'll finalize that, but that's in process. There's, there's about a dozen items and I don't wanna get into all of them. I, I really appreciate him coming out and I wanna have his contact information, uh, cause I may have to chase him down one day, but, uh.
Ms. Williams?
I, I would just like to emphasize what, uh, uh, Council, uh, then Wisworth said. If you, on that day, is not complete in that area, just shut it down, no work that day, and let people be able to come from Wayne Road straight to the polls, because this election is so very important and nobody needs to be discouraged to get lost, even with the, the map mapped out. So if you could, you know, consider that also.
For sure, for sure. That would be definitely a option. That would be, uh, really, um, hundred percent.
And Mr. Palmer, we do appreciate, I echo the mayor's comments for even coming out and braving it in front of, uh, the council today.
Well, I just wanna make things easier, things that, you know, kinda got out of control and, uh, you know, um, as me being a superintendent running this job, I want it to go as smoothly as possible and, uh, it reflects everybody, reflects Rickman and, uh, how we do work, and, um, I just want everybody to be happy and I wanna make sure everybody can get around, you know, safely and, you know, um, without having, you know, problems. So, yeah, just send me an email or call me anytime during the day. If there's any little thing that, you know, hey, this, I can get in my truck, I can hop right over there. If it's trucks, anything, just give me a call.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Madam Chair, I'm just curious, uh, if the valves come from Japan, where's the pipe come from?
Um, uh, pipe came from actually Wisconsin.
Oh, good, I'm glad to hear that, cause I thought the manufacturing was on a, if you listen to the news.
Madam Chair, who we have next?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Madam Chair, the next, uh, written request is from David Dalton. David Dalton. Okay.
Good evening, Councilmen and Women. My name is David Dalton. I am a resident of Romulus who resides at seven eight one five Canterbury Drive. I come before you to ask the Council to approve to have the following streets blocked off for a back to school, a back to school community event. Um, it's the corner of Canterbury to Concord. The time will be from two o'clock until nine PM on September the sixth, two thousand and twenty. We are requesting the following, we will, um, require, um, the residents to follow the, the state's, uh, social distancing rule to wear face masks and stay at least within an area of a home they'll be attending. Uh, this is important to our community, so we cut, to come together and have this event at this time. We, we were not aware of the process, so please forgive us for the timing of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Williams?
I would just like to say Mr. Dawson is, uh, from my community, and the situation with the, the event, it's more like the street need to be blocked off or secured for the ban only. Every other resident that live in that community will house their own company. So say like if the council members came, they would stay at my home, stay within my property. So it's not like you got a hundred or two hundred people running in the middle of the street. So the only reason that we're asking for the street to be blocked off is for the ban, because the ban will be the only one in the street. So I just wanted to say that to Council to make them aware of that, and we definitely, uh, I definitely believe in masks. I have, uh, half a garage full of masks to, to make sure everybody have masks, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. I think, Madam Chairman, I think the clerk, there's a process that, that just they fill out and go through your office, correct? And then the departments typically, what happens is that DPW who puts barricades, the PD, who, who has to notate the road closures, that's all on that form, and then that comes back to you as a recommendation from them. So I, I, I would wanna make sure we go through that process and, and notate these, uh, I, I think what's really important, cause we've been really trying to curtail any type of, uh, events is because of these governor's orders. So we, we just changed earlier, we talked about, for example, our meetings here, we're going back to Zoom meetings because it's so difficult, uh, with, with the restriction of the ten people. I'm sorry you had to stand out there, but that was, again, it's not our doing, it's the governor put those restrictions once we got back to public meetings. So I don't know if the clerk can speak to that, um.
Hold on one second, Ms. Williams, one minute.
Oh, the, what I wanna say is that because of the timeframe, the date is what, September the sixth?
Yes, ma'am.
So we won't have a meeting before the sixth. So, um, you know, the council needed to, uh, you know, to get the paperwork filled out, but the council needed to make a decision because our next council meeting saying that they have to come in front of council is not until, what, December the seventh?
Eighth, I think.
Eighth.
Eighth.
September the eighth.
So the event would be that Sunday, the sixth?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
If I can, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, we've had several requests for block parties or different events such as, you know, that you're requesting, but they've been suspended at this time because of the governor's order and because, and, and the recommendations that have been coming back from the department, especially Public Safety, has been to suspend them at this time because the responsibility of, you know, if someone doesn't, I mean, you can only do so much and, and, and mandating social distancing, but there is a risk of people and, and if someone was to, you know, test positive, it's, it's just, there's a huge liability. So we have, yeah, we have suspended, we've had several requests, and, and upon the recommendation, we have just suspended those at this time until the governor's orders, cause we were, we had a request and we thought maybe with the governor's orders that once it's lifted, then we were, you know, we're instructing everyone, then they could, um, have their, you know, have their block parties or their, or their events. I know that it's outdoors, but it's still, um, the recommendation from Public Safety has been to suspend them until the governor's has completely lifted.
That's correct, Ellen. We did have some people that did things on their own property that, as long as they adhered to the,
On their property.
On their property, but when it came to us granting, uh, the issue we had was some of our department's recommendations, that they were not comfortable making a recommendation and we go against what the, the state was saying. So is there a way you could do it just with the private property and keep people distanced and everything else without even having to close the road at all?
We would have nowhere to put the ban. Like, everybody that comes, it's gonna be attended, just gonna stay at my house, and everybody that's gonna come in my neighbor's house is gonna stay at their house. So everybody, everybody's gonna be at their own individual homes. And it's, it's just gonna be the ban in the street plan.
Yeah, my concern would just be what our public, what our police department and public safety would say about that. I don't have that authority. They, they have to give it a, a recommendation on it, and the clerk is right, we have suspended those, so.
It still has to go through the process, I'm sorry.
Councilman Wisworth?
Just, you know, you could have up to one hundred people at an event outdoors. I mean, is that the, is that the, you can have a hundred people, but in the street, I'm not sure if that's gonna fly.
No one's gonna be in the street, it's just gonna be the ban.
Well, the ban's in the street. You know, I'm just, um.
Up through the chair.
Ms. Wa- oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Wa.
Oh, I was gonna ask, uh, approximately, how many people gonna be there? Now, now we're speaking of children, young people, etc., and what is this about? What is the theme of this event?
Back to school.
Back to school.
Kids. So for, for my, I probably have around thirty, thirty people at my house alone. And then my neighbors have twenty, twenty-five, thirty, but my neighbors stay across the street, I stay across the street. The up, I, I don't see them have large people.
Well, see, that's the only thing, and I had not thought about that either. I forgot, uh, the police will have to sooner. But if the ban is gonna be in the street, then yes, you'll have to get permission from the police department, even if we want you to have it, but like my colleague said, you are allowed a hundred people outdoors, but this is mainly, I guess, like a park setting, or if you have a large yard, because, you know, if the ban is in the center and the music, these people go crossover. I know I would, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to just, you know, just let the police decide, you know, whether you can, because it is the governor's, uh, governor does say, but, um, you all are adults, and you'll have to keep the children safe with the mask, uh, if you say from two to nine, nine o'clock, it's to be over, you know, as long as you stick to what you say you're going, you know, you're going to do. Um, but I was at, I was at a gathering on, um, Chamberlain, and there are probably about sixty, sixty-five people, but they had a huge yard. And the way that they set it up, right on top of one another. If it was some way that you could set that up and show whenever the police would come, you know, how you would have set up, because the way your houses are, they're facing one another. You don't have the backyards facing. You will not, you don't have backyards facing the road, and, um, but I wish you will. I mean, I, I would like to see that for the kids, just going back to school, something for them. You could have it maybe in a park or someplace, one of our parks.
Ms. Williams?
And what I would just like to say, when was the last time the city had, uh, the drive, uh, drive-in moving?
We have that and two more planned, and we, what they did is they restricted them to vehicles. We had DPW keep the distance and they had to stay in their cars. Uh, we're trying to find other ways that we can do things, because you heard me earlier talk about Pumpkin Fest being canceled. You know, if we could do a road rally or something, if, if a family's in their vehicle and they're, you know, that's cool. There's nothing in the governor's order that prohibit that. I don't know, Steve, if you have any comments on this request, but, um, without having a department approve it, it makes it kinda tough. I, I, you know, I can't, I can't recommend approving it, and I don't, you know, I know there's a timing issue, which I feel horrible about, but I don't know if you have any recommendations on anything we could do on this one?
Right.
So if they made a motion contingent upon the department's approval and the governor's order, at least then, even though there's no meeting, they would know they could do it. And then if they come back with something different, or the governor goes the other way, at least we've, you know, tried to give you due process and let the departments take a look at it. Is that reasonable?
I think that's fair. Through the chair, if I may. You know, it's fair for him coming up here stating this, but still, it's me, I'm gonna be fair to the board. Anytime we can have a business that's not practicing safe distances. And our police department, I respect with the highest. How that to happen, then the small amount of people that he's gonna have, and it's not like he's gonna have people all over Romulus coming in and they're spreading something. These are people that they know, because you don't have anyone coming to your home that you don't know, or your children don't know. But I will agree with attorney's opinion that we do vote for them to go ahead and make those plans because the governor could change the order or see what the police has to say. And I'd be willing to, to cast my vote to allow you to do that, because there are some businesses around here that hasn't obeyed the rules. To the point that, and I'm gonna be truthful, and they did spread the COVID, so I don't even want to go there.
Okay, any, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you.
If I can, Madam Chair. Mr. Dalton, if you can come to the, visit the clerk's office tomorrow so you can fill out the necessary paperwork so that we can get that circulated, so we can, you know, get started with the process for that, okay? But again, council, I think under old business, when we get to old business, then you're gonna have to take some, you know, action that it's contingent upon the recommendation approved by, contingent upon the recommendation of the department heads.
On unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dalton. Okay.
The next request we have is from Dwight Helms.
He seemed as interested, it's pretty humid outside. But I'm here because of the trucks on Wick Road. This has been going on too long. I might see anybody failing during their job, but how long we have to wait before the administration or this government does anything? Somebody gets kicked over there? I watch go around the garbage, they probably doing forty, forty-five a minute now. It don't do me no good to call the police department, it don't do me no good to call the mayor's office. And there's a gas leak covered by me that they caused, D T E won't fix it, because they say it's pretty. Written and Will not admit that they done it. It's been going on over there this whole time. And if anybody don't believe me, please come to my house, I'll buy you dinner, I will buy you lunch and whatever, and watch these people over there. This been going on too long. And the main ones are, it's called Hoover Hoppers, the orange and black trucks, have been flipped off. Do it out in front of my house and go. And this, excuse me, but this is what I get from those guys. Now, you know who's the best that come in? People. But they are really doing a good job. But these other people aren't. And the same thing, we, I begged everybody to try to get some dust control down there. You know when we got good dust control? When your neighbor come up there and was complaining, they done it the next day, down there. They done it one time since, but they still haven't done. Washed my car, they, because of the dust down there. If I turn my wipers on, instead of wiper blades, that's how great it is. They do a pretty good job of keeping it smooth. Mr. Burkhoff and whoever, we had to fight them to get them to move those tubes there. But the D T E could check it out. The guy's name, D T E, he's a foreman, if you'd like to talk to him, I will give you his.
No, I'm well aware of the D T E issue, and that's their issue right now.
But they won't fix it.
Well, and that's their authority. So the only thing I would say is, you made a comment about doesn't do any good to call the mayor's office or police department. Come on, really? We've responded, how many times has police been out there? How many times has Captain Monty been out there? I'm where you're called today, and we gotta hold them. I was on a meeting with them, we brought that up.
Speeding out there today.
And we've dialed up enforcement, we've had the trailer out there. So here's, we don't have enough resources in our town for every street that I got a complaint like that. You know those complaints, the bottom line, you talk to any community, and there are gonna be incidents where people will speed. You can't, excuse me, let me finish.
Promised us utopia over there, and all we've got is nothing.
I'll respond under our.
Can we, yeah, can we, can we, we gotta.
I mean, even look down by your house, they've made a catastrophe down there. They're starting at six-thirty of the morning bringing these trucks in, down through there, and they lining them up six, eight, ten, twelve down there. And if you had an emergency down there, you couldn't get through, you had to.
Thank you, Mr. Helms, we're gonna get addressed on unfinished, have more time to respond on unfinished business, okay?
Miss Webb knows about this. She was over at my house and she helped get those tubes moved. She smelled the gas, you can walk out there now and smell the gas, oh, is that my house? And what do we have to do? Wait till somebody gets hurt, blows up over there and blows half thing up? You know, this is not my backyard, so the administration doesn't care, you know?
No, thank you, Mr. Helms. Thank you.
The last written request is coming from Stan Gordon. I'm not sure what his comments are, but, Mr. Stan Gordon? Good evening, Mr. Gordon, you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Good evening, Council. It's Michigan. Stay. Speak now. Meeting, city? Stated two homes that could be built that were smaller than the average size home. A lot of my neighbors are looking at what they're putting up right now and think that, you know, it's gonna be smaller. We won't know till they finish, because you can always build up and add square footage. But two was the max. There were twenty-two lots and ten percent represented what was already there as far as smaller homes. So as long as they don't go over two, we don't have anything to complain about. But two things that we do need to know, actually three. They made a promise to fix the infrastructure at Branton Chem Lane. When it rains very hard, it floods. That was one of the promises the builder said they would take care of. When are they gonna do it? The, one of the other things they were gonna do is put in street lights. We need to know when that's gonna happen. And then the turn lanes from off of Pennsylvania onto Brant. They were supposed to add two turn lanes so the traffic doesn't have to slow down from off of Pennsylvania. Haven't seen any sign of that, but they got signs up all over the place, infinity homes. And we were concerned about the taxes that we pay and our home values going down if they put in smaller homes. We've been there what, since the subdivision started, so that would be something that we don't want to see happen. So the property value needs to stay up, so they need to put up the larger homes and equal to what we have. So we want a timeline on the improvements that they promised. And then I just had one other thing that, for the life of me, it just troubles me every time I go down Brant. Between Drew and Leroy and between Leroy and Dorset, the road is horrible. You can bend the rim, tear your tires up, get your car out of alignment, when is that gonna get fixed?
You know, the ones on the infinity, I'll bring, Steve and I are gonna be in the meeting, hopefully we can do it this Wednesday afternoon. The Brant issue with the road, as you know, we did part of it. We had, we had a local street millage that came close twice and failed, that was on that road. Roberto did a phenomenal job of trying to get some of the work done in that neighborhood, and we're still looking for more. It's funding is what it is. We don't get enough funding from, you know, the state to do anything on any of our local streets. So when you hear things come up like Lansing's awarding this many million dollars, those are typically going to interstate, state roads, others, not, not Brant Street. So, you know, those fall under our local roads, so I don't want to mislead you. We're looking for creative solves. What happened is we did a good job of fixing part of it, and that got people excited, and they went, what about the rest, right? And that's what you're referring, it's rough. I get complaints probably weekly on that. We have been doing coal patching, but that's not a long-term solve. Believe it or not, though, here's what's pretty interesting. We get all, and we do have data to back it up, a lot of speeders, I don't know how they dare speed down that section of Brant. You know, are we, do we not, Mr. Walker, we're just talking about it, I mean, we had some other complaints. So as bad as it is, you know, the more we fix Brant, it seems like the faster they want to go. But I don't want to mislead you, it's something that's on our radar screen, but I don't want to promise you that it's gonna be done next year, because that's not necessarily true. But we, it's, you know, we have it, we do what's called a Pazer rating on our road condition and balance out with what funding we do get. And believe me, I would love to finish that, because it looks like it's half done, but that's kind of an update on Brant.
Okay. Matt, make a suggestion? I don't know if you've gone to any of the universities, like Wayne State or any of the universities around, and see if they had any new technology for the concrete that they can have the school work on, on that road? Just to see, so to cut the cost.
There's some technologies, but, you know, I don't know that they're really there yet. You still have to go through the process, and we own the road, who has the proper authority and liability to do it? But there are some, I have seen some creative things, and I know our D P W has looked at some creative solves, more on the asphalt side than the concrete side, but I appreciate that. And we're pushing hard to look for as many solves as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Do we have your information, just so we can get back? Because I know we're gonna have that meeting, and I want to make sure we include those and try to get back to you.
Yes, I filled out the card.
Thank you. Steve, you had some.
I can address the street lighting. I've seen the paperwork on that, that is gonna be done. It's been priced, D T E Energy's gonna do it. Installing, the lights have been picked out, the kind of lights, but they're not gonna go in as long as there's construction going on, because we don't want a construction vehicle accidentally hit one of them. So that, that's the developer, Reno, Salvi's, Infinity has agreed to pay for that. It's been priced the amount we know, we know the type of street lights, so that, that will be done.
Yeah, I guess the biggest.
Just to ask the attorney, now, when they install those street lights, do they, is the resident in that area, in that community responsible to pay for that lighting once they're installed?
Not the cost of the lighting, but.
The use of the light.
Electricity.
Special assessment.
So that'll actually go onto their tax bill? And I just wanted the resident to know that, so he's not shocked when he get his tax bill once they are installed, because it happened to us.
I think we got a letter saying there was gonna be a H O A added, so that's what the H O A is for, to take care of the lighting.
Okay, just, just so you'll know.
Right, yeah. The biggest thing is the infrastructure. When it rains bad, you can't get out of Chem Lane onto Brant, the whole thing is flooded. I mean, I, I can't, I mean, I have to work from home. Have the water.
We'll make sure those concerns come up with, there are some concerns there. We've heard some of them before, and I've been in contact prior to this meeting, during the meeting, about trying to quarterback a meeting with, it's a series of building ordinance, and there's some P D issues speeding it. So we'll try to address the best we can, at least we have everybody's names and numbers, we can try to keep them up to date. And we appreciate you coming out and sticking it out and passing that word on.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk has your information.
Yes.
I have one more question for you. Is the ditch in the, in the back of that sub, is it flowing again, or is it still flooding out?
That's a good question.
It was down there last year about.
Yeah, it, it does sometime, but if it's a really heavy rain, you're stuck, because you can't go out that back.
I know, I've seen it, all right.
The issue is this stormwater retention, it overflows into the county system. And when that gets overcharged, it's not doing anybody any good. So that, that is still a problem that we're trying to address with the county, because we can help fix that problem, but if it doesn't go anywhere, like, you're still dealing with it. So, but we're definitely aware of that one. Thank you for coming out, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one more request to speak. And this is from, I think it's Herteseen Gregory, and Miss Gregory.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Herteseen Gregory. I live at one six six seven one, Jessica Lane. Okay, my problem is not really bad, but I had the garbage, the, I think it's a porta potty, that's what you call it. I call it a commode, whatever it is. Anyway, I came home and the porta potty is sitting right by my mailbox. And I don't think that's sanitary to do that. I get my mail out and then the porta potty sitting right there. Okay, then I asked the man to move it, and he did. And then the next day I came home, the dumpster sitting right there in front of me. Now, look, I pay taxes.
Where is this, can I ask? Where is this, ma'am?
One six six seven one, Jessica Lane. Let me tell you my last problem, I got a lot of problems. Okay, I had my house washed, you know, for the winter. And if you all had have told me you're gonna build then, I wouldn't have paid that much money for the washing my house. I think, I think somebody should wash my house again, I'm a senior citizen, okay? I made it three, four years old. And I, I do not believe in leaving work on somebody else. I paid to wash my house, and I think my house should be washed again. And I don't think that's right. And I, and every time I come home, you know, like I go to the other place, I come home and the man, I was standing up there. I didn't want to be, you know, don't be unmean and stuff like that. He took his truck and looked like he had never cleaned it out, and about a week or two, he put all of that stuff down on the street.
Miss Gregory's speaking the mic for me, so they can hear you.
He put all that stuff down on the street. Okay, then I. Okay, then I told the man about it, the man that built it, I guess that's who he is. And he said, well, what about me bringing a dumpster? I said, every time you could, you all come here, I think you supposed to clean up behind yourself. My house is clean. I was taught to clean. And I would like for them to do what they supposed to do. See, my house is sitting right, you know, the third, second house from the, you know, from the entrance. And every time I come home, it's a mess. I cleaned my house before anything. And I think they supposed to clean my house back up. I really truly do. Now I don't have anything else to say, but I wish somebody would wash my house back down. The dust is, the windows, I, the windows cleaned and everything. And the dust today, you know, they move all that dirt they had today and it, it just flying everywhere.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. I've got your information and your address down here too as well. Thank you.
Thank you and try, if you can, please try to help me keep it like it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
And I really thank you all very much. You all doing a beautiful job.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Okay, good night. Bye-bye.
Take care now.
Thanks for coming out.
Madam Chair, that was the last written request to speak. Now we have um, three requests to speak that are from, that have joined electronically.
Okay.
And so just bear with me while I set this up.
Take care now.
Okay, now the, the, to make this work successfully, we're gonna have to let that person speak first before you respond, so we won't have any, you know-
Right.
Statics, so one second here. Alright. Okay, alright. So the first person that has requested to speak is, we have um, Sam Pernick. And um, if he can be unmuted so that he can speak. Mr. Pernick, can you hear us? Um, let's see. Alright, let's see. Mr. Pernick, can you hear us? Mr. Pernick? Are you able to hear us? Okay. I'm gonna come back to Mr. Pernick. Um, let's try um, we have Verdel Blackman.
Hi, this is Verdel Blackman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I um, I have two concerns. I reside on Harrison. I'm south of, south of Eureka. Um, I addressed the city council in twenty fifteen, right after I had moved in about the speeding. Directly across the street from my home is a sign that says, there are blind children at play. The speeding on this street is ridiculous. We all know that I'm sorry does not bring back a life. But two thousand dollars for a speed hump will really, really do a whole lot. I'll even contribute half, because I have almost been hit three times trying to get into my driveway. And I'm the third house off of the corner of Eureka. Between Cherry and Eureka, they think that it is the Indy five hundred. I have stood outside and yelled at people with their windows down, slowed down and they look at me and it's like, oh my God, we need to stop. I shouldn't have to yell. And there are children. I don't have any children right now. I have adult children, so that's just as bad. But little bitty children, oh no. I wouldn't want somebody's child to take a chance. The speeding is ridiculous. So I don't know, like I said, I addressed this personally at the council in twenty fifteen. I moved here in twenty fourteen about this. It has, something has to be done and the police does not deter these people. So y'all can put Wayne County, Romulus, Taylor with their doggone famous gardener white cop, I don't think it would stop these people. The only thing that's gonna stop these people is when somebody's child gets hurt and you hear them say, oof, I'm sorry. I was in a horrible car accident on I ninety-four in twenty seventeen. I just had back surgery. I don't want anybody to endure what I went through because of a speeder. And I was on the freeway. This is a residential street. This is ridiculous. I know that it caused to get speed bumps. I know there are ordinances that have to be installed, but a speed hump, tear up a couple of people's mustangs. Guess what? They'll stop. I'm serious. And hell creases right down the street from me. So when the school year and COVID is over, we're gonna have children back walking these streets. Nobody's child needs to be, go through that. My second concern is, the entire council received an email from me earlier this weekend about the homes that were being sold. The reason why I sent that email is because I used to be on the board of directors of GRDC in Detroit. We had the exact same problem with Metro Realty, buying up the homes and renting them out. I moved out here, not because I do not like renters. I moved out here because this is the community that if any of you are longtime residents, Melody Lane Records was my father's record store, right there across from Romulus High School. And this is something that I'm passionate about. I'm now a resident. I don't want to see Romulus turn into Detroit. I just really don't. And I don't want to be forced to move again. I'm fifty-two years old. I can't just be moving when non-caring homeowners move in or people who want to rent out to people who don't care. That's my only concern and I appreciate you guys for listening to me.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And just to Ms. Verdel point, she did send out an email to everybody and Julie White Tokos from the mayor's office is addressing and looking into her issue. So um, just as a heads up.
She'll be responding, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Madam Chair, the next request is from Sam Pernick. We're gonna try it again. Mr. Pernick, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Uh, just a little bit louder. Let's try it.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Pernick? You can speak now.
Okay. It, it, can you, can you type something if you can hear me? I, cause I, I'm not, I'm not able to. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, appreciate uh, uh the time. Uh, hope everybody is uh doing well dur- during these difficult times. My name's Sam Pernick. I'm one of the organizers behind the Romulus Marijuana uh Initiative. Not a resident of Romulus. I live in Royal Oak. Uh, I worked on the uh legalization campaign in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen to legalize adult use uh cannabis across the state, which was successful. And as many of you may know, uh Romulus voters approved proposal one by over sixty-five percent of the vote. I believe the vote was close to sixty-seven percent in support. So uh, I, I know that the council has already passed a resolution regarding this and uh, looks like uh, had a meeting last week in closed session. So I don't expect my comments to have an impact on a kind of your decision um, today. But I did just want to, you know, make a couple of, make a couple of comments. You know, right now, um, a lot of people have kind of lost faith in our democratic institutions and our democratic institutions are under attack. And I think that the problem that, that we have in our political system is that uh, there is, there seems to be this tendency where people try to put their own political views um, ahead of the democratic rights of individual voters and individuals. We saw that with the emergency manager petition where it was ruled to be unconstitutional because of the font size issue. And then they, it was passed, then they basically gutted it, reversed it. And we see that all the time, where there are attempts made to usurp the democratic rights of voters. This is the second petition that has gone, that has been done in the city of Romulus. And I think that the voters of Romulus deserve to have a chance to vote on this. It's obvious the council doesn't support marijuana businesses. I understand that. And it's a complicated issue and people have different opinions on it. But what I hope the council would really seriously think about is even if you disagree, citizens need to have a right to have their voices heard. And the petition process shouldn't be arbitrarily rejected um, based on uh, political views, which in my view seems to have been the case here. We think that these petitions were legally uh, put together. We followed the process that was laid out in the charter. We don't think that the city attorney's opinion is legally correct. Um, it seems to have been something that was pre-decided. So I, I guess I'm very disappointed by the process and I hope it's something that the council will reconsider it at some point. Thank you.
We got one more.
Mr. Heimberger? Yes?
Hello, council?
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Okay, thank you. I had a quick question this evening. On the upcoming warrant that you're going to be paying, the Downriver wastewater authority, for July and August, there's a hundred and four thousand dollar charge for excess flow. What is the flow from? Is there a way we can change it? I mean, a hundred and four thousand dollars a month for excess flow is quite a bit. So if somebody could give me some ideas, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
It was really hard to hear. It was really cloudy.
Is that under unfinished?
Okay, yeah, cause I, yeah, I don't even know what he said.
Do you need him to repeat it or we, or do you, do you understand?
Okay, we'll, we'll address it under unfinished. Okay, any of, any more?
That was the last um, request.
Okay.
Electronic request.
Okay, let's close, let's close that out.
Um, number nine is unfinished business.
Oh, Mr. Westworth?
If I can, I'll, I'll go with the mayor. Mayor, on Pennsylvania Road, in fact, the um, I would say it's the whole length of Pennsylvania Road going um, from Meekster all the way down to the west side of the city. Uh, the weeds are ten, twelve feet high. Um, the um subdivisions that we have on Pennsylvania that come out south there, other cars have to almost peak out and on because of the, because of the weeds. And the um, also the weeds that are on two seventy-five by the railroad tracks have to be addressed too.
Alright, I'll have him get on. I know that uh, the one is county, but we often have to go out and prompt them or try to help if it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Okay, and I have one other thing. Uh, recently in the past couple of weeks, and I talked to you about this and I talked with the chief of police, the people in Oak Brook Sub, which, we've got some residents that have been there twenty, thirty, forty, even some fifty years. It's, and this other gentleman who lives in the back end of the, of the subdivision, uh the speeders were getting to be ridiculous. People were actually, you know, I'm, I'm scared to walk down the sidewalk with their dogs or have their kids ride the bike. And I know the police department has put an effort into this and the folks that live there do appreciate it, even though the problem is not totally solved, but they're working on it. And you know, it's sad that, you know, these people that are going through, you know, sixty miles an hour, going through, you know, um, um, stop signs. You know, we have to, you know, I'll call them punks because they have no respect for the people that live there in the M subdivision. And I, um, in fact, the um sergeant that was dealing with it, um, I think it's a lady, Sergeant Harris, the, the folks were quite pleased with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, they were, they're making efforts. They did write a lot of citations and as we talked earlier with the other gentleman, I mean, part of the road is horrible. And they, we did have our trailer out and we're indicating some high speeds, so we dialed up some, uh, some enforcement. We'll stay on it. It, it's tough to do, you know, you can't be every place, but we will definitely continue to try to make progress.
And I have one more question. When can these folks start paying these speeding tickets at the court? Is it?
They're taking, we just had a meeting with them last week. They're online, uh, through their website. They're taking payment now. Uh, so you just, we get people that want to come here and do walk-up, but they are taking payment and uh, they, they told me the best thing to do is send them to the website.
Thank you.
Is there any discuss, any more we can say regarding Du- Dwight Helms? He was just really-
Yeah, I'll get to that. I, if, if, if he's done, I'll be happy to get into a couple of them. Uh, yeah, Dwight Helms, he, he's, he's talking about uh, the Wick Road, which uh, isn't even, there's only a couple of patches torn up by him, so the dust, I mean, he ought to be down by me. Uh, it's a construction zone. It's a Great Lakes Water Authority project. Rickman, who you heard from here is the contractor. They have subcontracted some. It's not going well, guys. Um, that's why I had a meeting today. We got a meeting, the Great Lakes Water Authority, uh, we've climbed the ladder. Roberto's done a good job. Uh, it's, it's behind on the schedule. Uh, so we're trying to get them back on track before winter, so we get a hard surface there. Uh, not the final surface, but at least a hard surface. The speeding issues and, and here's what I, I, you know, it's a little bit troubling is we respond to people. PD responds, our, our office responds. Uh, I'm very well aware, Mr. Helms called today. That was brought up to both Rickman and to Great Lakes. Uh, we are dialing up, you know, with our PD. We've had people on that street. Cars there, we've had the trailer there. Are we always gonna be there to catch the one truck that goes by? Obviously, we didn't today. So uh, you know, we try to do that and we need our, we need our residents to help us. If they see patterns, if they see certain trucks, we got the name of it from Mr. Helms. Thank you. Now we can address it. You heard from the foreman, he's aware of it, that was here. Uh, the only way we can solve problems is if we get good data and facts from our residents and from people that witness those. So if they can help us with that, but to say that PD is not responding, um, the DTE issue is a DTE issue. Our, our fire department was out there multiple times. We spent resources. It's identified as a DTE issue. Uh, we've communicated that to them. Uh, we'll continue to do that. We can't force DTE to change their priority. Uh, they obviously don't feel it's a higher enough priority. I, I can, you know, I've mentioned it to them. We'll make sure we remind them of it. Uh, so we help with those issues. I know it's frustrating. Uh, it's frustrating when uh, people are dealing with inconveniences and dealing with extra noise and dirt and disruption. Uh, we've had a lot of residents and I thank them for their effort. Uh, they've been very, very patient. Um, you know, to, to Great Lakes Waters' credit, they have been walking the area and notifying and talking to people when they are gonna be doing some blocking. But um, there have been some times where yes, there were uh, blockages. What we were told originally when this started and what's actually transpired is different. Uh, that's frustrating from the city. It's frustrating from Roberto when we're trying to hold them to it. We've increased our accountability with OHM to watch them. Um, we've been on them on truck routes, where they go, how they adhere, how they keep uh, our clerk informed of what they're gonna do with elections. That's been top priority. Uh, in every meeting, uh, we've had uh, Wednesday calls that I've been on for the whole construction season. So uh, I understand that people don't want to hear excuses. Uh, help us solve the problems. You know, don't say we're not responding, because our office responds, PD responds, Captain Monty has been out to this gentleman's house multiple times and he's thanked us for the efforts out there. Uh, I'm sorry something happened today that he happened to witness. He let us know about it and we addressed it. Can I promise them that's not gonna happen tomorrow? I can't, but we can make sure we're holding them accountable for it. And if it keeps happening, we'll try to dial up more enforcement. So it just gets frustrating when we're responding on a regular basis and, and trying to help the residents. We have some that have been interrupted, much more than that. In the construction, I would say, hang on, Mr. Helms, the construction's not even in front of your place yet. Uh, it will be soon. So uh, you know, it, this isn't gonna go away, guys. So uh, I'll know more tomorrow. We have a afternoon conference call with uh, Great Lakes. They brought in a third-party uh, engineering firm to help oversee it. Because Roberto, you know, rattled their chain all the way up to command and let them know we're not happy uh, with some, with the timeline and with some of the work that's being done. So if you guys on council have specific things, we will address them and get back to you. Um, we're trying to make sure we have a hard surface before winter, uh, and that they get the work done underneath. And um, so anyway, that, that's what I can tell you on the, on the complaints that we had and we're all over it.
Madam Chair, um, Mayor Burcroft, Roberto Scapatici would like to have some comments, I think what's on.
Want to talk more about it? I've been on the phone with Roberto on this pro- I've been on the phone with Roberto on this, no, I'm just kidding. Roberto wants to chime in.
He did, yes.
And you know what? Roberto's been doing a great job. I give him credit. He's the one that's been holding the contractor and Great Lakes, their feet to the fire. I don't wanna get into all the things he talked about today, but he's really holding them to some of the things that, that need to happen. So Roberto, if you wanna chime in, you're more than welcome.
Chair, before Roberto chimes in, I'd like to say something as well. I spoke with Mr. Helms when he was here two or three weeks ago. And I went over there right after the council meeting. I smelled the gas. I seen where the big tubes were. A nine thirty. And in front of Mr. Helms, I said, hang on a second. I dialed Roberto's cell number home that next morning. Those things were moved. But his problem now is DTE. And you know, it, he's on a schedule because it's not considered a priority. Just because you may smell half the odor doesn't mean that it's explosive at the, you know, at the moment. But I have to give Roberto a hand because every time I've ever called him, he is on the job. And they did it every day. So I know sometimes I may get a little, and, and other people may. But when you make that call right in front of that resident, you've done your job. And we as council members, it is frustrating. We get calls all the time. Every morning, I get up, phones ringing, and, you know, until I go to bed at night. But I tried to solve them with some wisdom and common sense. But I always call Roberto when it comes to this construction. But it's one thing I do wanna say, and I know he's still on the phone. I do not appreciate Mr., well, GLW says that he's a superintendent. Some why he showed up this evening is, superintendence? Roberto went to the top. Roberto went to his boss. And he knows he's wrong when he mentioned that water truck. And, you know, I have a thing for water trucks. Not out there every day. I don't care that the water trucks need to be on site, and tomorrow I'm gonna be on site. They know, they hear that. I'm going on site, and I had better see a water truck or else I'm going to request to pull that contract. They're gonna pay the city because we are paying for that water truck to be on site. The city in that contract. Now either they wanna pay us back all that money or else they're gonna do their. You can take it from here, Roberto.
Actually, I think Roberto wanted to answer the issue about the excessive flow that came up from the other call. He has been all over the, the Great Lakes water, and actually, they pay those bills. But he's been on them on all those issues, and he's been great, very responsive, like you said. So I guess we'll turn it over to him. This was a question about, it sounded like the warrant from the excess flows and the charges that appear on the warrant is the way I took that question.
Okay.
For Mr. Heimberger.
The excess flow. That, that is kind of the leftover charges. We, we pay for sewage in that district based on our water consumption. And they assign each community a certain charge to deal with costs that are unassociated with the original water bill. So in other words, when they add up basically all of your usage, there seems to be some stranded costs that don't get divided up within that contract. It's not a perfect way to bill people, and there's a lot of communities that are upset about this way that they're, they're billing. And we've started a new process to divide up the costs and pay for usage differently than has been in the past and with what Wayne County has developed for the DU Authority.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Heimberger, I, I didn't understand. Did, did you understand what he was?
His question?
His question?
Yeah, I didn't hear it.
Whose question was it?
It was the Heimberger.
Oh, he was asking about the charge on the warrant for the excess flow for DU. It's a Downriver Water Authority that we're part of with thirteen communities. So that's what I took he was questioning, which Roberto answered.
Okay.
He's already logged off the call, so.
Okay.
Or if that didn't answer it, Mr. Heimberger, call us tomorrow and we'll get you. But that was the explanation that Roberto answered.
Okay. Ms. Roscoe?
I just have a quick comment in regards to all our speeding issues in the city. It seems like the police officers are doing their due diligence, but like you said, they can't be everywhere. But unfortunately, it's like in every corner of the city. I mean, my neighborhood, we're having big-time issues, and we don't have sidewalks through where I'm at. You know, when the kids are out, they're not on the sidewalk, they're on the edge of the road. And, you know, all I can do is ask people to please slow down. I mean, we've got signs up, we've got, you know, speeding, you know, how fast you're allowed to go. And they seem like they're just cutting through and doing as, as will. But I don't know what the solve is. All we can do is stay on it, have our police officers stay on it and, and go from there. But, you know, I'm putting it out there to the residents that when you see these people come through there, if you can grab a license plate number or a description of a vehicle or whatever, and just report that. Because by the time the police officers come out, those people are gone. You know, they're, they're not around. But if we can start trying to get some idea of, of who to, who to talk to, at least we can, you know, try to get people to start slowing down.
Sure, I'll, I'll share a success that we all were probably blasted with, which were the Amazon trucks on Hanen, the large trucks. So we kept hearing about it. We were trying to get help from the residents. We did deploy, Chief Finesse went out. I know Captain Monty had gone out. We had sent people to help us solve the problem. It wasn't even a law enforcement problem. It was the trucks having the wrong app on their phone that were directing them down the road. So the wrong trucks were on the wrong route, and on top of it, they were speeding. So the speeding, once we wrote a few tickets, that took care of that. So it's not perfect, but I tell you what, we have employees that live on that road, and we, we heard immediately it was changed. So by getting the residents engaged, councilwoman, that helps us. So when we get to the root of the problem, we try really hard, and we usually have a pretty good track record of that. Are we perfect? No. Are we gonna still have to stay on Hanen? Sure. But those are examples where we get some wins. And so to the public and to anyone out there, if you can help us with that, we're gonna do the best we can to respond to them. Every community is dealing with this. There are more violation areas than they have people to cover. But we are, we are very open to trying to dial that up where needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
unfinished business? We have unfinished, unfinished.
Madam Chair, I didn't know if you all were gonna take action on that block party request. Everything, again, it's contingent upon the recommendations from the departments, you know, public safety departments. So I didn't know if you want to take action or not.
Are we taking action?
I would like to.
Okay.
That's what we said we was gonna do.
Make the motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
That, that we refer it to administration and, you know, what happens next. So at least the petitioner doesn't have to, he's not really a petitioner because he hasn't filled out the paperwork. But in regards to closing them roads, that's what we're talking about.
So how about contingent upon approval from those?
Contingent upon, upon approval.
Okay.
And, you know, what happens next with the governor's actions?
Steve, is that all right with you?
Can we do that? I mean, at least that way he has time that if, you know, if she lifts everything, then, you know, we should be good to go. And at least that way, we've done our due diligence to allow them to do what they're trying to do.
Okay.
I support, I support that.
What's the language? What's the language?
I, I would.
Perk has.
Okay, what is it?
I just have requests to approve block party contingent on the department's recommendation and the governor's orders. Is that?
Sounds good.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, wait.
Support it.
That's okay with the attorney.
Okay.
You're not really approving the block party, you're approving the road closure.
Road closure.
Right.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Contingent upon approval. At least that way they don't have to come back to us.
Right. Who, who supported that? Eva, okay. Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to, for the approval of the road closure dependent on the department's recommendation and the governor's orders regarding the next steps. Does that sound right? Kinda.
I could fix it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
If there's no more unfinished business, number ten is new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-sixteen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We pay warrant twenty-sixteen in the following amounts. General fund, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Major street fund, forty-one thousand, excuse me, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Local street fund, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Public safety fund, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Cable TV, eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Merriman Road Special Assessment, two hundred and three dollars, eighty cents. Street lighting fund, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-three cents. Oakwood SAD, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Nine One One Service Fund, ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Narc forfeiture for the state, six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Library Fund, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-three cents. DDA, twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Tifa District Two, four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Twenty-fourteen Capital Improvement Bonds, twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Court Building Construction Fund, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Water and Sewer Fund, one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, eighty-two cents. Motor Vehicle, one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, ninety-four cents. Technology Services, forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, eighty-three cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Revolving Fund, six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, thirty-three cents. Current Tax, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, eighty-eight cents. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, eighty-one cents. Payroll Fund, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. All Funds totaling one million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the payment of a warrant number twenty-sixteen for checks presented in the amount of one million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. Any discussion? Hearing, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth? Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
For twelve is communication.
Yes, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna, I just wanted to thank Chief Allison for helping us. We had a lot of people out there tonight, and they kinda helped us keep it organized. So thank you, Chief.
Definitely.
Yep, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you. And again, I just need to thank all my colleagues up here today. You guys look great. Thank you, Mayor, for supporting, and Stacy Page, we'll work out something for Ms. Ellen hopefully down the line. But through the month of September, if you guys can support, you look great, and thank you again.
Do we have to worry about the Zoom meeting?
Yep.
We don't have to worry about the line.
If there is no more communication, number thirteen is adjourned.
So move, support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Williams, to adjourn this meeting. Mr. Wisworth? Ms. Williams? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Chair votes yes, we are adjourned.